All right, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Mount Airy Planning and Zoning Commission. All right, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks. There was a town community picnic that a few of us were able to make. I know some of you guys had conflicts, so you get to enjoy your very own mug. These are really cool.
Cool, thank you.
Apparently, the design is really turning out to be...I'm not sure. Melissa, were you responsible for this design? Because these are really...
I took a picture of it off the plumery building, but I didn't help create it at all.
It was a high school...
This is the same, the linear design.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the graphic, but I mean, just the color scheme and everything and the...
Yeah, the kids' names are on it.
Very, very cool.
But the mug design itself, right, you're arguing?
Annalise, can you take credit for that?
Very nice job, guys.
And I know you guys like big mugs, so big mug is what we got.
Thank you.
No, Barney Standard is a gallon.
Very neat. All right, our first order of business tonight is election of members. This is traditionally the time of the year when Planning and Zoning Commission elects officers. So with that bit of background, we'll start with election of Chair of the Commission. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Bill Butt for Chair.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion made by Tony and seconded by Leslie. Are there any other nominations? Okay, are you ready for the question? All those in favor of Bill Butt as Chair, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And I will recuse myself, but it's okay, 4-0, all right. That brings us to Vice Chair, and I would like to make a motion. I'd like to nominate Lindy Brown for Vice Chair. Okay, any other nominations? Are you ready for the question? All right, all those in favor of Lindy as Vice Chair, let me know by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, like sign. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, super. Okeydoke, approval of minutes.
These are, Bill, the ones with the questions that you sent to me a couple days ago.
As you can well appreciate, both Melissa and Annalise have been nose to the grindstone in Heather's absence, and there's been a lot going on. So the feedback that we were giving them and the requests that we were giving them, quite honestly, not all of it was able to get completed. So what you have is some additional tweaks to these minutes. I went through them a couple of times, but we just didn't get them out. There was so much additional material that was coming out to you, Annalise didn't want to bury it. So I am comfortable with it, but I want to give you the opportunity to take a look as well.
Can I make a request for not necessarily these minutes, but the future minutes? When you refer to Mrs. Smith, can you put the first name in? Because it's very confusing which one you're talking about. Okay, thank you.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, then I'll move to accept the minutes as amended. Is there a second?
Yes, please.
All in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, it passes. Annalise, thanks for that extra effort.
Thank you, guys, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Annalise.
Okay, that brings us to citizen comments. And as you look over the agenda and the items that we're going to be dealing with tonight, if there's anything else that someone in attendance tonight would like to speak to, we would invite you to come up to the podium and the microphone and to take a few moments and share with us whatever's on your mind. Anybody wish to do that? Okay. All right, then we will move on into site plans, or sign permits, actually. We don't have any site plans or subdivision permit review. Annalise, want to take us through this, or Melissa, whoever is...
Actually, and I apologize for the misspelling, that's my fault. I didn't realize until she told me like two minutes ago, just by the way, you spelled it wrong. The first sign we had is for Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay.
They are located at 1311 South Main Street. Dunkin' Donuts has submitted a sign permit for their location at 1311 South Main Street for review and approval by Planning Commission. The applicant proposes to install two menu board wings, which you can see in this photo of a similar sign. No illumination for the sign is planned at this time. The menu board wings measure 1.5 feet in width by 4.3 feet in height, for a total of 6.4 square feet. With the proposed additional signage to the existing menu board, and I'm sorry, I messed that up and do not have the new total, that is my fault, no I do, is 54.8 square feet. The frontage for the drive-through sign only of that building is 58 square feet, and 48 for the frontage that's facing towards South Main Street. The original sign was approved for the menu board back in September of 2006, I mean, September 26, 2011. The approval was for the menu board to measure seven by seven with two additional directional signs that came to a total of 49 square foot. In the minutes attached, which I believe you had for the first section after the signage, Mr. Lamar, is that how you say it? Thank you. The franchisee owner explains that the menu boards are made for a national chain and indicate that individual franchisees do not have much control over the type of signage that they are asked to put up. Originally, back in September the 26th of 2011, they did ask for the wings, and the Commission did not approve them. Upon staff research, an additional of...indition of menu wings does not exceed the allowed signage on the drive-through area. And this is the sign with the wings out there before they were taken down. And I do believe the franchisee owner is here.
Without the wings, it was 49 square feet?
I do believe, let me look at my...
No, 7.7.
Okay. Do any of our other fast food restaurants have this same feature?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, most of all of them do.
Everyone does, okay.
And typically, what it is built, those wings are done mainly for seasonal promotions, you know, special coffee flavors for the holidays, if they have a special promotion for, you know...
Okay. Mr. Wood, did you want to come up and answer questions, or address us, or speak to us?
I pulled my back yesterday. But no, this is a standard signage that they give us, and every, any Dunkin' Donuts you go to, or any franchisee, the things that go on the signs are printed nationally and shipped out to all the franchisees, so everyone is given the same. They don't print out a certain signage just for my location.
I understand.
So those are the signs, they came with the board, we had put them up, and not realizing that the seven by seven that we were falling under.
Okay, okay.
It's a pretty standard item, and it's at the back of the building, it's not somewhere that anyone can see from the road or anywhere, it's behind the building. In fact, these turn, so if you turn these, it actually reduces the area, so you, I can put it straight like this.
Your drive-through in your ordering area is actually at the back of your building, isn't it?
It's at the back of it. So this is behind the building, and there is a railing behind it, too.
Okay, all right, anyone have questions, or...
So you can keep them turned?
Yeah, they can turn whichever way. If the cars are coming from, if I turn them like this, when you're looking at a seven by seven sign, you're looking at this, these sometimes are in this direction, so from the front, if you count the square footage, it's pretty much nothing, because the cars are coming from here, so you actually turn them based on the seasonal offerings that they have.
And do they cause any visual, you know, obstruction, or...
Not really, no, I mean, because the sign itself is that wide.
They're only a foot and a half wide, on each side. Okay. So Annalise, you've written here on the material upon staff research, the addition of the wings doesn't exceed the allowed signage?
For their total square footage on that sign.
Okay, it's approximately the same.
So it doesn't?
Okay, so staff is recommending approval?
Yeah.
Of the application? Okay, any other comments?
Unless you may have any questions.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, I'll make a motion that we accept the staff recommendations approval of the sign permit application with the design and building material proposed.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Motion by Lindy and seconded by Tony to accept the recommendation of staff and to approve the sign permit application with design and building materials proposed. All in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, like sign, and it's unanimous. All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lamar.
Good luck with your bag.
Yep. I know the feeling. The telephone calls we carry on Rails for Trail Saturday morning were too heavy.
Next, we have the Mount Airy Inn, they are back again. There was some revisions made at the last hour of last week, and they, I apologize for probably did not get them via email because I had a hard time. We were having a lot of server issues with trying to get stuff out, so if you didn't get it, I do apologize.
Revisit.
Yes, that is it.
Second.
It's behind your desk.
Yeah, it's not in the packet.
The Mount Airy Inn is located at 1401 South Main Street. They have submitted a sign application for their location for review and approval by the Planning Commission. The application to install channel lettering to replace the wall mounted signage, I don't know if you can really see it real well, but right now, underneath where the peak is, it's just a solid board that says Mount Airy Inn. They propose sign measurements is one foot by seven inches by 12 foot, for a total of 20.5. The sign will be eternally illuminated by LED lights, not externally as once before. The frontage of the building is 50 linear feet. They were permitted originally back in May of 2013 for the proposed sign there with the circular sign in the middle, and then just Mount Airy Inn across the awning. The applicant has revised it, the applicant revised the application now to reflect the new proposed sign. As in May, they were approved for the circular sign, they now have chosen to place that on the building.
There he is.
So it has changed from, it kind of went through a change quite a bit. They have now chosen to place the circular sign on there. In addition, they have added pizza to the restaurant and grill underneath of the Mount Airy Inn. The manufacturer, sign manufacturer promised me that the pizza part will not stay red, it will go to white as the rest of the restaurant and grill is indicated on the signage.
Okay.
The total for the channel lettering is 20 square feet, the circular sign is nine square feet, the total signage is 33 square feet, their frontage is 50. Oh, linear feet, I'm sorry. Staff recommendations, staff recommends approval for sign permit application with the design and building material as proposed.
Okay, Annalise?
Mm-hmm.
Are they continuing to include the round sign?
Yes, they are now.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
They kind of gone backwards with, originally, back in May, they were approved for the round sign, then they came back with just taking it off and not doing, and then the third revision was it coming back on.
So did Melissa, did you write the size of the sign?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and did we confirm, I'm sorry for being, did we confirm that the sign is actually the same size?
It is 24 square feet. You're talking about the channel lettering.
I'm talking about the size of the Mount Airy Inn restaurant, that entire sign, which is now LED, you're saying is 20.4?
24, we, Barney and I calculated today and came up with 24.
So if you block the whole thing, you make a box?
If you just make a box, it's about two feet tall and 12 foot wide.
Right. But the original sign, if I remember of the drawing, it could be wrong.
Was only for 20.5 square feet, because it did not have the restaurant and grill and pizza underneath of it, the one that was approved back in May.
Does it all fit within the gable, or does it extend past?
According to the picture, it does look like it comes out some. I do believe the sign manufacturer is here, Mr. Malka, does it come over the side some?
Yes.
Okay.
It's going from one inch to the other.
Okay.
Well, their frontage is like 50 linear feet.
Interesting, but you have to take in the round sign plus the LED.
Which the lettering always changes from.
Channel set design illuminated with light two LED.
Uh-huh.
So it's all changing. The sign actually is bigger, compared to the last one. Because it's going from 10 and a half by 120 to 18 by 120.
Wasn't it also underneath before, or is that like two or three by?
The channel lettering was in the...
Yeah, underneath.
Yeah.
Solid wood running underneath.
Yeah.
And what, do we know what the square footage of the round part is?
Nine square feet.
If you square it, it's nine, if you take the actual, just the circle, it's seven.
But regardless, it's well within the 50 linear feet and 50 square feet that they would...
Both signs say Mount Airy Inn?
Yes. The one underneath, I mean...
Just in case you're not sure they read the first time.
Well, I think the one time before, at least, the logo, I mean, that is, is logo, which I think is appropriate, so just taxes in there.
Yep.
And that was already approved, the design and logo, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Okay, is there a motion to accept?
I don't know. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the staff recommendations for approval of the sign permit application with the design and building material proposed.
And I'll second it. Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Bill. All in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, like sign?
Okay, I've changed my mind, I'm opposing, too.
Okay, so we've got, can we vote again? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand.
Three.
I just think it, personal taste.
Yeah, it's too big.
I think it's too big for the gable.
Yeah, it's too big.
I just think it's too big for the gable.
Well, I guess the thing is, it's too big for the gable, but is it, does it fall within the criteria?
And it does, but it still doesn't...
Yeah.
I mean, I'm glad you put the circular back, because that was really, that logo was lovely, and I've been looking for it every time I go over that one.
Yeah, it's not a great design, certainly.
The concept for this building was supposed to be quaint old Mount Airy town, and that's why the original sign looked it, and this looks, doesn't fit with the building, in my opinion. I just think it's too large, it's too, it's redundant, it's...
An issue of how much we didn't decide.
It's just personal taste.
Look what's across the street.
I'm saying that building, I'm talking about that building, that's all I'm talking about.
You can't apply one standard or one building and a different standard to it.
What building looks like that across the street?
So my only comment, because I'm looking at this, that in the images that were attached in the original, the letters were all in the top, whatever. Now they're not, they're visibly extending past, plus...
Well, that's the problem, extended past the...
Plus, it still says that it's an LED box with a flexing front, but the box, I'm assuming it's have pieces with the channel letter sitting on top of it, they're extend well past that frame anyway, so it's not just the letters.
Correct.
What about Frank, is Frank here?
It's not what he thinks.
The monitor in this channel letter, it's not relatively in a kid-sized box. Read the LEDs.
No, so I'm looking at your new image here compared to the one that was presented in the handout originally. So is the box with the letters, I mean, this image appears that the box is shorter than the letters, and you have to be driving the LEDs with the box, so I'm assuming the box is going to have to extend to the M and the N.
No, it's going to be this size, no, it's going to be this size, exactly what you have on the picture.
I guess what I'm saying is the white box that's going underneath, you're driving the LED letters, so the box is going the length.
The box on the bottom, that's not going to have box, the LED, they're going to have box.
That part to that part.
Yes, the LED is going to have box.
Correct.
Three-inch box, but the box under, that's going to be just a box, it's not going to be like, because you can run the LED inside this box.
Right.
But with the monitor, you're going to run that cable through the box.
So is the proposal that if this is accepted with LED, that you were going to take the floodlight off, because there was an external floodlight shining on the front of the building, and that was, I thought, the purpose of having an engraved medallion and the letters and stuff was so that the light...
Yeah, because the old, what is the old sign and all the LED is just going to go out, because that's the new design. Old signs has to be removed, right? I don't think so, you want to have it to sign, the old, you know, it's going to be...
So the only illumination will be the internal?
Yeah.
The LED part?
Okay.
True style.
Well, so what do you think about it extending? I mean, that's the only problem that I have, beyond the A.
I don't have a major problem with it.
I guess, is there anything, are there design guidelines that relates to that?
I think whether it's totally within the gable or extends a bit, I mean, the font is essentially, I think, complementary with the style of the building.
Color's nice.
I think the fonts in line, I think the fact, there is nothing in the signed ordinance against extending past a gable.
If I tell the font, it's going to be exactly the same like it's the old font, that's me, maybe on the picture, maybe on the pictures, looks a little bit like, not perfect, but the channel letter is going to be exactly like the, like the original sign, but like the channel letter, not...
And it's compliant with regards to the other things that are...
All right, let's try the vote again on Jennifer's motion. All those in favor of accepting the staff recommendation with the design and building materials proposed, let me know by raising your right hand. That's four votes, and all those opposed, like sign, that's two, okay, it passes.
Thank you.
Annalise, I'm glad you double checked.
Barney was my hero.
I just had a feeling that it might change again.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that brings us to St. Andrews Presbyterian Church's monument sign.
Yes, and I believe the gentleman, they are here for the sign. St. Andrews Presbyterian Church, located at 609 Center Street off of Route 27, has submitted a sign permit application for their location at 609 Center Street. The applicant proposes to install a monument-style sign at the entrance of their new church, which is not as you come in, it's kind of right as you pass where the pavilions are as you're coming up the hill towards their new, their new church. The monument sign is to be, is being constructed of a wood and plastic commercially-made material with stone pillars and base. The sign measures 12 foot wide by 6.2 foot in height, for a total of 74 square feet. The lighting for the monument sign is proposed to be illuminated by one ground light. The property frontage is 100 feet, and this is, what they propose is not as big as that, but that's what their idea is to have it look like, with the stones, to make it look really classy and nice.
Okay, gentlemen, is your design, the background of the sign will be stonework?
No, not the background, the actual inlaid sign in your package, I believe you have to say, what do you do? There is a drawing of the actual sign itself. That is made by sign manufacturer, people in plastic. And then the actual supporting pillars are all stone and lock, you know, base, stone base.
So it'll look just like this Carroll County sign, but with your...
Ironically, yes, it'll look just like that. We passed that in, and that was drawn, and our master mason here came up with, and Carroll County, I'll be using this, so.
Pretty.
We could have almost gone with their saint, too.
Is that your mason with you?
Yes, it is.
All right, is this the same gentleman that made the maze and you're redoing it over on the other side?
Yes.
I think that's the only maze in town, it's kind of cool, very neat.
Real painful to have to jerk this with artwork.
Yeah, I was disappointed when that disappeared.
So you guys are going to put the QRC code onto the sign itself, or is that just for the image?
I'm sorry?
The QRC code. Are you actually printing that to the sign?
That's going to be on there, yeah.
And that'll, what, link to your website for the church?
Yes, it will. Yeah, we have some pretty high-tech versions. That's a new one, you mean.
Pretty.
Yeah, I like it.
Yes, so do I.
Very neat. That whole project has been very impressive, very impressive.
We definitely appreciate the Commission's help with that, so we're very happy.
Any questions for these gentlemen? Then I'll make a motion to, that we approve the sign permit application for St. Andrews Presbyterian Church with the design and building materials proposed.
Okay.
Okay, it's seconded by Scott. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, like sign, and it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
What's your timing for the sign?
I'm sorry?
What's your timing to put it up?
As soon as we finish the labyrinth, we're working on redoing the labyrinth, as soon as we're done with that, hopefully before we enter the labyrinth.
Cool, very good, all right, excellent. Okay, Annalise, and that takes us to Parkview Medical Group?
Yes.
This is the challenge.
The paper that's on, you did something. Okay, Parkview Medical Group is located at 1502 South Main Street. They have submitted a sign application for their location at 1502. The applicant, it has proposed to install a wall, a wall mounted box sign on the FMH building. The proposed sign measures two foot in height and 20 foot in width, for a total of 60 linear feet. The proposed sign is to be internally illuminated. The total square foot for the proposed sign is 40 square feet. There is some corrections in speaking with the sign manufacturer, and I believe it's, this is, the Parkview Medical Group occupies the entire first... The Parkview Medical Group occupies the entire first floor of that building practically. Um, so their total, um, frontage facing Ridgeville Boulevard is a hundred and ninety-one linear feet. Barney went out today and measured that for me. They have several offices, it's several offices within that medical group, so it's the main medical group, and then there's little offices within that. For lab, the pediatrics office, then there's the pediatric's office and whatnot, within that main core. Um, the box-style signs are not typically favored by the planning commission, um, but there are similar signs on the building, such as the Bear Creek. Sorry, the Bear Creek, um, the Edward Jones. The county office, um, has similar. The sign was erected without a permit, um, we have spoken with Parkview Medical Group, um, to ask if they would consider doing any different style. But they have chosen to stick with the box style, since that is typically what is out there on that building.
And Elise, do we know how long the other signs have been on that, that west face of the building?
The last permit I found that was for the Edward Jones was back in. I believe, like, two thousand and five.
I'd say, I don't remember, and I've been on this planning commission longer, I don't remember anything coming.
How long has the building been there, and have, have those signs been there essentially since the beginning?
The tenant, tenants changed out, I mean, have changed out.
Uh, I have a question, is there more than one front to the building?
There is actually two fronts.
There's an entrance on that side?
There's an entrance on that side, there's an entrance on the side facing South Main Street.
Facing the gas though?
Yeah.
I know there's an entrance on the back by the pizza place.
Yeah.
But it's three fronts?
Three.
Yes.
Is there a designated front to the building?
Yes.
Which is the front of the building, where's the back of the building? It's curious.
Well, it depends on the tenants.
What is the address?
Fifteen oh two South Main Street.
South Main Street, but to me, that tells me that's the front of the building, and I think we're supposed to stick with what's the frontage of the. Side of the building, or the back of the building, or the roof of the basement, I think, we're supposed to go by the front of the building.
That's what we had said, yes.
That's, we've, we've been down this road before.
But it's also a corner lot.
But it's two frontages on this lot.
I'm asking where the front of the building, where does the entrance, what's the address?
You have two frontages, yeah.
So, there's a Ridgeville address?
No, there aren't.
I'm not being difficult, I'm just trying to be fair to everybody.
This came up with the Eliano, remember?
Right.
And AT&T.
In the zoning ordinance?
Is it?
Uh, it's, you mean as far as the frontages, I mean, anything on a corner lot has two frontages.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the Parkview Medical Part are actually the tenants that you enter on the west side, are they not? Okay, but is, is Parkview just on the first floor? Or is it on first and second?
Well, she said originally it was the whole entire first floor.
I'm Charlie Muschel with Affordable Signs. Parkview Medical Group basically occupies the whole floor, they are, FMH Hospital owns the entire building.
Okay.
And underneath, where you see an affiliate of Monocacy Health Partners, all the different divisions inside or under that one umbrella.
Okay.
So, that is basically to get the people to the building, um, they had, um, um, basically consultants from Ohio. Design, the, the sign for this building, that came out, took measurements of the building, the, at different access, and as far as to. Get people in and out, um, and they were having a lot of problems with people getting to the right entrance to finding the individual building. It was unfortunate that in all of their, um, diligent work, the designers were in Baltimore, that it did slip through the cracks as far as the permit. But as far, as far as this, the linear footage of the building, the square foot of the sign, and the type of sign, there's nothing but box signs on the whole side of the building. Anything else would be out of place, and, you know, so, that's part of the design element.
And do, do you recall, or how long we've had the box signs on, on that building, does it go back to?
Quite honestly, I'm not sure myself, that would be, yeah, that would be before my time.
I guess one of the questions I had when I looked at this was that, and this is off estimates of the drawing, the Bear Creek Dental sign said it was two and a half feet by ten feet.
Does it?
That's what I saw.
Okay.
Unless it's inaccurately reflected on the diagram.
I have three by twelve.
I have thirty inches by a hundred and twenty inches.
The measurement that I have.
Is this your drawing?
Roughly two and a half by, by ten.
It looks, it looks accurate.
Okay, so, using that, two and a half feet by ten feet, it's twenty-five square feet, and that's fine, it's still within signage. Um, but then I look at the Parkview Medical Group sign, and it says it's thirty-six inch sign. So, the spacing of the sign, it's a little bit taller by about a half a foot.
Well, let me say this to you, as far as the other side, we did not, we didn't build or install the Bear Creek sign.
So, do you need a favor, could you get the podiums here, microphone?
Thank you. The Bear Creek sign, we didn't, we didn't fabricate the sign, we didn't install the sign, that measurement may be approximate.
Let me talk to you.
The sign above the Parkview sign is absolute, we built that.
Under, understood, but in, in correlation of the signage that exists on the building today. That sign, relevant to the other signs, are they all the same height, or is that sign actually larger than the other signs?
The other signs, they all vary, there is no standard, as far as the signs go.
Because I think when I looked at this faraway shot.
Okay.
Of the front of the building, the signs. Roughly look the same, I don't know what the black sign is, the third one to the right. It looks a little smaller, but my, my point is, is that for consistency of the signs with the spacing between the windows and the awnings, it looks like this is the largest or tallest sign.
Certainly in width, certainly in width.
Width or height?
In width, but the thing, though, that you're not taking into consideration as well, is that the amount of space between the windows and the roof line up here. Is smaller than the space between the two floors. They're not on the same plane, it's an optical illusion.
Right.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah, it's, it's eight bricks tall between the two windows, and it's about six bricks tall for the second set of windows.
Yes, sir.
But that said, you're sticking a bigger sign in a smaller space.
Scott, there are some more examples of what is out there.
So, see, that takes four bricks. I'm looking at the Bear Creek right there, Bear Creek takes four bricks, so you've got four bricks, four bricks, and a six-brick sign.
Bear Creek, Bear Creek looks to be the same size as Parkview, but nevertheless.
Well, I'm, I'm going by, to be fair, I'm going by what I count as bricks there, all those bricks are uniform size, I don't think the bricks are changing size. So, when I count the bricks, four bricks by Bear Creek, there's six bricks by Parkview, and there's six bricks by the other sign.
Okay. Okay, so you've got four Bear Creek, you've got one, two, three, four, and a fourth brick, what do we have above?
Got six. It'd be five, if you count the halves, so it's, it is bigger.
It's maybe, it may be slightly bigger.
Understand, but then when I look at the other drawing of whatever the other place was. The brown one.
Oh, Edward Jones?
Yeah.
I don't understand the significance of that.
It's four bricks. The significance that I'm trying to get to, Bill, is just that you've got different sized signs, so we have no uniform. Between signs right now, so we're trying to keep the look consistent across the building, so I understand box signs, cool, they're all box signs. I think we wanna keep signs, at least relative to some size, regardless that while you have a hundred and ninety-one square feet, so stick a nineteen-foot by ten-foot sign on the building.
And I disagree with that premise to begin with, anyway.
Which, the nineteen by ten, or the size of the sign?
The size of the sign.
Well, I think you've got some variation already.
I know we've talked about entrances, but the front of the building is Main Street, their address is Main Street. I think we should stick to the front of the building for the sign size. That's what we've done in the past, and I think we should not diverge from that path, just trying to be fair to pass sign applicants.
And what is the frontage of the front of that? Do you get that? The other, the other question I have.
So, what's the forty inches based on, or the, sorry, forty linear feet?
That was what we had originally, only had thought, firstly, when they were only occupying from here to the other end. Which I did not realize they occupied that, our thing.
Are there any signs on the South Main Street side?
Yes.
Do you have any pictures of that? Do you have any pictures?
No, I do not, um, wait a minute, yes, I do, I think. That's just one piece of the front.
That's the window that.
Yeah, class sign.
Pretty sure they have a big FMH medical.
Above the, uh, entrance, I think.
Yeah.
So, this was a question I asked Melissa, too, and this is something I wanna just post to the body real quick. Is that, is the sum of all the signs on the building account for this linear square footage of the building face itself? So, whatever side you pick, I understand, but if we say, we pick one side, you add up all those signs, that's the available space you have.
Well, it.
Not for business, like, if you have fifteen businesses in there, each business gets a sixty-foot sign, square foot sign. It's this linear footage of the building face, that's how many signs can go there, regardless of the number of businesses.
So, Scott's saying the cumulative square footage.
Correct, although, for the sign ordinance, which I realize we haven't finalized, if you had a corner lot. It was the frontage of both, of both fronts.
Right, but that doesn't have, so you have to go with what exists right now.
That also didn't respond, but it still is the frontage of both sides, where is it?
And there is signage in the back, too, that faces pretty much parking, and that's it.
So, I, I guess what I'm asking, I still haven't had my question answered.
Well, I'll just throw this out there, we've allowed this for years.
Does it mean it needs to continue?
I mean, you've got some degree of inconsistency that we've permitted.
I mean, this building has multiple tenants, and that's why there's multiple signs, but they do not have, I know there's an entrance on Ridgeville to take them upstairs to the second level. There's an entrance on that side, that doesn't give them a pass to put a sign on that side of the building. Because, again, address is fifteen oh two South Main, it's right here on the application, that's the building, they do occupy the building. And that's their address, go by whatever size, front of the fifteen oh two South Main is, would should be the base, sign size.
Monica, was that accurate, or is that incorrect?
I was just saying, we've gone by whatever the front of the building is, and their address is fifteen oh two South Main. I contend that we should look at fifteen oh two South Main, the front of the building, whatever size that is, and that's the sign we get.
Honestly, I don't know what we've done recently, I mean, I.
That's what we've done, we've gone by the.
And the other question.
Because there's multiple entrances on all sides.
The cumulative, I was more, that's more what I'm, what my head's at right now, is what's the cumulative for all the signs on the building? Versus how much frontage it has, basically, that's what you're saying, right?
I'm, yeah, I mean, and I think that's, that's a, I'm not discrediting yours. Yours is legitimate, too, but first, you need to know, is the summation of all the signs on one side, the available space.
Total frontage is different than front of the building.
Because you, you know, and on our new centers, you know, each sign that goes into a new suite is exactly that limit, that footage, that front footage, and nobody exceeds that. So, you, so that you know, if you measure the building from one corner to the next, all the signs that are on that building are gonna add up to that tot, total linear footage.
I know, like, for the Eliano Center, we, we, we had a count at one point of what, what, you know, what all those signs were, because we were keeping track of how much had left.
Exactly.
Would you give a frontage, linear foot, a frontage per floor? In other words, if you're allowed a hundred linear feet, did a hundred for the first and a hundred for the second, or you just do a hundred, total hundred?
I.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we did.
It's a hundred and ninety-one feet all the way across.
No, I thought we did that, I was, I'm thinking of it.
What John just said is a very specific question that was what I was leading into.
What's the answer?
Well, I, I wanna get Monica's buy on this, girls, but Jennifer asked a very specific question, which is what I was leading into. If you say it's a hundred linear square feet, or a hundred linear feet, and you get a hundred square foot sign, is that per floor? Or is that total for the frontage of the building?
I thought it was per floor, but I.
Which means you have two hundred square feet, or a hundred linear foot building.
Right. And if you have two frontages, you would have that, both, that same calculation for both frontages.
How did, how did you, how did you approach the Eliano?
To delay this, yes.
You've got two floors there.
Unless somebody can pull out the order.
They, each of the. They, each suite, whatever their frontage was, that's what they got, like, Peepers got a certain square amount.
You have a lot of signage on that building, okay, but you've got folks upstairs and downstairs.
Was, were AT&T was because they were that corner, and I think California Tia might have been saying.
Okay, Barney's got.
Yes, Barney.
Um, section one twelve dash seventy-one, the code, it's under definitions, frontage, the length of the front property line of the lot, of lots. Uh, but in a public street, road, or highway. So, and you have two frontages, and the sign is based on. Uh, the frontage, the length of the front property line of the lot, so, that, that is your frontage, is the length of the building. Face, facing the street.
But it doesn't talk about two floors.
But that's, that's, that's.
Per floor, it doesn't say per floor.
But that would be sign placement on that, if I take the literal words you said. Linear footage on that one side of the building would be the number of signs that could be on that building is equal to the linear footage. Correct? So, on each side, if you're saying two sides, then each side could have linear footage of sign equaling to whatever that linear footage is, in square footage. Right? Right?
Yeah.
So, it doesn't say anything about different floors, so I'm still on the, your available square footage, if it's a hundred and ninety-one linear feet. All those signs on that wall have to add up to a hundred and ninety-one feet or less, otherwise, the signs can't be approved.
And looking at it, just looking at the picture, I see four other signs besides this proposed sign. Uh, the proposed sign, I think, is sixty.
Sixty, sixty square feet, sir.
Bear Creek Dental is twenty-five square feet.
That's what I figured off the drawing.
The medical one in the sign, in the middle, is smaller than Bear Creek, we call it twenty-five feet. Uh, the ones in the right, which is the, um.
Edward Jones.
Just a little bit smaller, so it's shorter, but it's twenty.
It's about twenty-five, seventy-five, and there's one in the upper right, it might be a little bit wider, but not as tall. I'm gonna say those are all about a hundred, and then you add the sixty, that's less than the hundred and ninety-one.
Understood, but also, I just wanted to point out, besides this building, to ensure it's in the one ninety-one, which is great. It also limits the number of other occupants that are in that building. So, if somebody is the first person to put up a sign, and say, I put up a sign nineteen-foot by ten-foot, I took up all a hundred and ninety-one feet. Nobody else can put a sign on that building.
Yes, sir.
They are the owners of the building.
Yeah, it's the bill, the building owner's responsibility.
No, no, I, and, again, that's fine, I'm just throwing it out there as a fact.
Yeah, they're the end user of the building, they use it for themselves.
Well, it's the building owner's responsibility to, to distribute the sign like appropriately.
I, I'm just throwing it out there, that if they put the sign up there, it limits any other occupants that have a sign, as long as you know, and that's fine.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we wanna have a, an actual calculation besides estimate? Not that, that estimate wasn't good, but.
No.
I mean, do we wanna defer this till we have an actual calculation?
I, pardon, you want to, you want a motion to conditionally approve it pending, you know, doing that homework?
I would just recommend my personal comment, is that, A, the sign's already up. So, if they're not asking to build a sign and put it up, it's already there. There's no other signs that are probably gonna go up there, that are gonna fit in that space, maybe a thirty-foot sign, but find out what the final numbers are.
Yep.
I mean, I, I think I can agree with Barney's estimate, it's definitely under the one ninety-one. So, I don't think it should weigh on this decision.
And what's the repair for that, if it is over the one ninety?
If it's a shopping center? Guys, just to put another wrinkle on it, if it's considered a shopping center, it can't exceed a hundred and fifty, it's thirteen.
Okay, well, now I change my-
If it's considered a shopping-
It's not a shopping center.
I'm just saying, if it was considered a retail-
It's not a shopping center, it's a medical complex.
Well, it's not, it's got a pizza place for that.
Except for the pizza shop, unless that's a medical.
It's a medical complex with a pizza shop.
Eat the pizza, then you have to go to the doctor.
These are ridiculous.
We're trying to get away from that, we just got rid of the police, the retail's going down.
Well, it's either retailer or it's not, if it's medical, the pizza place should be there.
It's not, I don't think it's considered a shopping-
Big shady gray.
If I could present to you, I've done the calculations of the existing signs that are on the building.
Okay.
If that would help you out in any way.
On, on that side, on the west side of the building, what, what, what does the total add up to?
And it's, okay.
Yeah, we're feeling a little bit of a walk on the door.
I think that's about one nine, that's where we all-
Oh, so we have to be careful.
So, is it?
What we got here?
I, I don't have my calculator.
So, is this the total?
Thirty-six.
It's probably the total of one thirty-four.
That's what he's saying the total is.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thirty-six, sixty.
I think that's what he's saying. I think it's one thirty-four.
What about the signs on the business?
Um, my math's a little different, but that's fine.
Do we know the square footage of signs in the back or on the other side, do we have a sense of that?
No, I mean, this side of the building is what we were focused on, and after my conversation with Annalise, this is what we based our measurements, measurements on, what we requested.
So, my math, just a little different than yours, you say it's a hundred and fifty-four feet, is that the total footage that you're thinking is all the signs?
No, 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 a hundred and fifty-four, that was the, that was the-
Yeah, it's fine. I'm trying to understand, when I have the signs, I mean, a hundred and seventy was part of it.
This, this was, this is as long, this was as long as my, this is as long as the picture was, or fifty-four.
So this is irrelevant.
Sixty, yeah, yeah, yes, 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 that's not, that's not-
You're giving me a number that wasn't-
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 sir.
Yeah, so-
Don't forget about the one up here that's not on there.
Yeah, and it, it doesn't add that one, so just to be clear, adding up the square footage that he just gave us for signs, it's a hundred and seventy-one square feet total, without adding the other sign on the side.
What's the other sign?
I have no idea, but just by this, you've got twenty square feet, so if it's bigger than two foot by ten foot, you've exceeded a limited building, and that's using his numbers.
Why don't we just get a valuation?
No, this one up here on the-
You're talking about, yeah, it's different entrance.
So, we need to check, we need to-
I think we need actual numbers.
Yeah, I agree. I wanna be fair to everybody, other, other applicants too.
Okay, is your pleasure to conditionally approve this, or is it to wait and do?
It's pointless to conditionally approve it, cause it's a, what's the point of conditionally approving it?
Well, yeah, and if we conditionally approve it, then what happens if we find out?
Well, I'm, I'm just asking you so we'll, you know, we'll go in the direction of-
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what the recourse is.
Conditionally approve, subject to the, the measurements, meaning criteria, if it doesn't, they have to come back.
Why even conditionally, I mean, you're right, it's already, but why conditionally approve it, let's go ahead and first get all the information.
Just saves time, saves us time to talk about it again, if, if it meets the criteria.
If they submit the information to Annalise, and it's right, then we don't-
Then why do we have to talk about it again?
This is done.
Okay, they don't have to, they don't come back.
Yeah, and if it doesn't pass muster, then it comes up on next month's agenda.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move that.
So you guys want the calculation then, for all the signs that are out there now?
On that face of the building, correct.
Facing towards Ridgeville.
And, and the side that faces towards the gas building.
Okay, you don't want what's on the back or the other side?
I only think we need this front of the building.
Okay, so just those two frontages?
It's the two frontages that are the factor.
Do them all, just take all the measurements for the sign.
That'll just move-
Who wants to wanna measure all the signs?
We really don't wanna know what's on the-
Barney's.
Oh, you're gonna do that?
Okay.
We're not.
So, I'll take a shot at this, um, I'll make the motion that we conditionally approve, um, this signage, this, this fresh signage, the condition being that the calculations are within the total allowable square footage.
Can I amend your motion?
Yeah, I was gonna amend it to you, go ahead.
That the calculation of the total length, or the total square footage, I'm sorry, calculation of the total square footage, uh, that's on the frontage along Ridgeville Boulevard is within the criteria allowable.
Okay, all right. Is there, is there a second to that amendment?
So do we get that, or do we need to further amend it?
I don't know, is that acceptable to you?
I would just further amend to say that the square footage of all the current signage on the building, on that frontage, no, that's different?
That's not what I was, what were you saying? Just the frontage along Ridgeville Boulevard.
That's all I'm saying, but all the signs, you didn't mention the word signs.
You didn't say signs, you just said frontage, and now, you just wanna know what the size of the building is.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, that, that was, that was the key, signs.
The total square footage of the signs along Ridgeville Boulevard is within the criteria.
Okay.
For the linear footage.
Based on the frontage along Ridgeville Boulevard.
Right, right.
I'll second.
Okay, all right, so there is a motion to amend the original motion, uh, as per Jennifer's amendment. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so now the original motion-
Are you gonna ask anybody to approve?
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so the amendment passes. So now we have an amendment that says we are going to conditionally approve this submitted sign design as long as the actual measurement conforms that the square footage of all the signage on the west side of the building facing Ridgeville Boulevard is per the criteria of the linear footage of that side.
Yes.
That's what we said.
All right, is there any additional discussion?
I think we already voted.
No, we go on the amendment.
Oh, okay.
Only on the amendment. All those in favor of the amended motion, let it be known by saying aye, raise your hand, aye, all those opposed, like sign.
Opposed.
Okay, and that passes, it, with conditional approval, okay, so who's gonna go do the calculations?
Barney, yes.
All right.
I'll go with Barney.
Okay.
We're tea, keep it a glass.
Do you have the ability to get up there to measure this?
We'll find a way.
Okay, because I have off the trucks, and I would assist you if you please, I appreciate it.
Let's not get Barney hurt.
Great.
Cherry.
Very good.
All right.
Okay, cool. All right, we got that. So we're now, we're ready for our planners? Okay, Carroll County first?
Sure, it's Carol, she's not here this evening, um, she's at another town planning meeting, so I'm here in her place. And actually, the next agenda item is what I'm here to speak to you about, which you've already provided me with the letter certifying your portion of the town's water and sewer plant for the county triennial update, so I appreciate that. Um, just to give you a little timeline and-
Okay, but first, let me clarify for everyone that's here. We were asked to sign off, to certify that the content that we were provided was acceptable to us and was appropriate.
But that's also the content, just let me clarify that, that's a content that you provided to the county to insert into your chapter for the master water and sewer.
And, and the only, the pause that we asked for was that, per the current draft, which is yet to complete the sixty day review cycle, okay, and what feedback we get from residents, and then what feedback we get from councils. So, it could potentially change, our, our, our content of our, our plan could potentially change, but currently, you know, it's-
And that's all we're asking for, I mean, we're just coming to as a courtesy for this plan, it is the county's master water and sewer plant. And if, do you mind me jumping ahead to the next agenda item, since we're on that, while I'm here? We are moving forward with this plan, and our, our goal is to have this in front of our planning commission next Wednesday. Um, it is not a public hearing, it's just, we're taking this to the planning commission, because they need to certify that, uh, the county's portion with the county master plan, so not only have we gone to each of the municipalities within the county, but we also have to have it certified by our own planning commission. Um, and then we're gonna have them move that forward, and we're gonna request a public hearing, probably for the beginning of December, with the Board of County Commissioners, for them to adopt the plan for the county. And then once the county plan is adopted, we will send that to the Ground Department of the Environment for approval. We met with the Planning Commission September sixteenth, many of the members were unfortunately not here that day, but just to give you a little background information, basically the plan that we're looking for was the plan that was approved by the towns and by the county's planning commission in two thousand and eleven. Um, MDE partially approved the master water and sewer plan at that time, basically they approved the county's history, so we had to go back and redo all of the town's water and sewer allocations and numbers, so that's where we are, and that's where we're hoping to finish up. Um, and then also, if just, if there are any major issues, which I'm hoping there won't be, because we've been working closely with the town over the last several years to make sure we've incorporated everything, but we do do two updates a year, a fall updated, a spring update and a fall update. So, it's not like the book would be closed even within this cycle, um, we don't have to wait for the next plan in three years from now. So just to give you a little, uh, reassurance that if something were to come online, we could always do that as an amendment to the plan when we do our, uh, twice a year amendments. So that, that's all I have, it's-
When, when is the presentation, when is the meeting, next Wednesday?
We are, um, presenting this to our planning commission next Wednesday, uh, September, November sixth.
And what time?
Um, our planning commission meeting started at six.
Okay, cause Heather had mentioned that.
And I think she might have been, uh, can, and I'm not a hundred percent sure just reading her email, I think she might have thought that was the public hearing portion, but it's not, um, we will advertise two weeks prior, duly advertise the public hearing, but we're still trying to get that in front of our board. Yes, that, that time and date have not been confirmed, once we know, we'll let the towns know, and obviously the citizens and members interested in attending the public hearing.
Good, cause we'll probably, yeah, wanna send representation. Good, yep, I know.
And I'm not guaranteed, that's what we're shooting for, is December fifth, um, just because with the holidays and winter may go, it's now, December, December fifth, I'm sorry.
But that's for the public hearing.
That's for the public hearing, the planning commission is November sixth, yes.
Okay, public hearing is-
We don't know yet.
That's good.
We're shooting for, um, I'm hoping December fifth, but I'm not a hundred percent positive, it will depend if we can get on the agenda for that day.
All right, okay, any questions?
The public hearing will be held with the county commissioners.
Correct, the county commissioners have to adopt it, but what we're doing next Wednesday, our planning commission meeting is just to have them again certify really the county's portion and the plan in its entirety, and we're going, um, with, to them with all the letters, just so they have a comfort level that the towns, we've been working with them, so they understand the process as well.
Okay, so, so you're modifying the county plan every three years, or you're doing an update every three years?
We do, it, the plan is, um, redone every three, three years, it's a triennial update, but, um, twice a year, semi-annually, we will update the plan with amendments, if there are amendments that need to be done. So for instance, if Mount Airy has a project coming online, um, and there's water and sewer capacity, and you can show that you have capacity adding projects, and that this plan is going to be updated, and you have also within your comprehensive plan that we can amend our documents then to fit those projects.
All right, excellent.
For your day? I'm Linda Eisenberg, I'm the Bureau Chief, uh, Comprehensive Planner at the county, so, I'm a new face.
All right, excellent, thanks so much.
But thank you so much, I appreciate your work.
Yes.
Um, is there any update on, any idea of, just an update on where Carol sits on the refact, and any thoughts to win, as they prevent the issue? Where, where is, where's the county currently standing?
Um, I do not have an update on that right now, I think right now it's just status quo, whatever the commissioners have set forth, which I think is, they're not going to raise or put a tax for residents, I'm not sure how that's going to affect the towns right now, I don't have any information on that any further. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much, thank you.
Great, yeah?
Good evening, um, the county is, excuse me, reviewing and developing comments on the town's master plan right now. We'll have those finished and completed probably within a week. Um, we are presenting, just as an informational item, to our planning commission your plan on Wednesday, November thirteenth, which is a date of your open house, I believe, so Heather was, didn't, she couldn't commit whether staff could be there to kind of augment the planning, county staff presentation to our planning commission on your plan update. But what I wanna do is, uh, hand out this to everyone. Um, just a few things, um, what you have, this is a map showing the current zoning, um, around the town and the current comprehensive plan, which was amended in two thousand and twelve. So they're, um, you know, kinda comparing this to what the town is envisioning for your future annexation areas, it's a bit different. I'll point out two of the main differences here, um, the Zeltman property and the Rigler property are shown on our plan as low density residential, but I believe in your draft plan, the town is, um, proposing those for agriculture and conservation uses. So that, that's, you know, conflict right there with how the town envisions, um, development and growth on its borders versus how the county's plan currently shows it. Then south of the town, um, south of one forty-four, uh, we're showing that area as, um, office research industrial, basically an employment future designation, that, uh, yellow and white hatching. Then farther to the south, south of I seventy, the eighty-four lumber property, it's purple, that's, um, light industrial on our plan. And then to the left, that actually, um, the zoning corresponds with the, um, comprehensive plan designation as well. So what I would, um, um, suggest that the town do, uh, I would suggest that the town consider contacting the county to do a community plan update. Um, when we did a countywide comprehensive plan update in two thousand and ten, we kinda scrapped the regional plan updates we used to do, and we do a countywide update, um, but we also do community plans and corridor plans. We did one in the Brunswick area when the city of Brunswick amended their conference plan last year. The county went in and did a quick, um, following all the procedures and laws, um, an amendment to our plan to match the town's. So, I don't think Mount Airy should expect anything less than what we did for Brunswick, so after you adopt your plan, I would hope, um, the county would amend its plan, amending what you see in front of you right here, to, um, show what the town is envisioning for your future destiny and your future growth.
And again, the, the, the procedure, the process for that, that we should follow is what?
After you adopt your plan by the council, um, um, contact the county, or even do it before, say that, you know, that the county should do a community plan update to mirror what Mount Airy has just adopted. I don't, um, you know, that's, I think the town should get on record, um, with that, because it's undecided right now whether we're gonna do that at this point, um, that's, that'll be one of the discussion items on the thirteenth with our planning commission. Um, those decisions will be made, you know, by my management, but I think if the town would, um, make that request of the county government, that we should do that.
Tim, do you recall when Brunswick, you know, petitioned?
Um, I think it was two thousand and eleven or two thousand and twelve.
Tim, just a quick question, something I noticed, you guys are proposing a middle school?
Well, that symbol, that's an existing, yeah, that's existing.
It's not existing, it says-
Oh, 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 yeah, that's, that symbol's been on the plan for many, many years, yeah, probably since ninety-three, I would guess.
That, that symbol was, has been on there since the Zeltman annexation controversy, and one of the points that the proponents of it have indulged was the town annexed, yeah, a middle school, well, or about that, that was just a planned site, there's never any funding for a middle school.
Right.
That's always been a matter.
I just thought they would strike it, that was all.
That, that could be an issue that, um, if the county does a community plan update to, to examine that, like for-
It actually shows on our property right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, like, I remember the town testified and wrote, wrote letters to our commissioners back in two thousand and twelve- I mean, like, I remember the town testified and wrote letters to our commissioners back in two thousand and twelve when they amended the plan. The town was pretty vocal against the addition of that LDR designation to Zeltman. But the commissioners added that, which you can see right there, so.
Sorry, Tim, you said the commissioners ignore votes.
Yes. By applying that designation to Zeltman, yes. That's the, the, the truth, the reality. So essentially, with Zeltman, doesn't have zoning in the county, but it's indicated for future low-density residential uses, most likely well-inseptic because they'd have to come to you for a public water and sewer, which you would probably don't have, your capacity could be an issue. So, you know, the, the county's plan shows that is appropriate for future residential development.
Okay.
So based on past practice with the county, they'll probably ignore a second request to keep it ag?
Well, I, I can't speak to that. I would hope they would be responsive to the fellow town government.
Yeah.
Tim, so just the, the, what you just said, so the town been pretty clear in spots. They don't let her way out. Commissioners just ignore it. The overall planning council of the state of Maryland are essentially saying, hey, don't, don't do any more well-inseptic. So if you can help me understand, if the town isn't going to, or has no plans to expand services to Zeltman, then the only way you could develop is well-inseptic.
Right.
I guess that's the current thoughts?
Right.
Of the Frederick County Commissioner?
Right.
Well, how does that fall in line with all the current, you know, voting, all the current thoughts in Maryland? Don't do that.
Right, very, very good point.
Will they bring that to?
Well, that's a good point. I'll address the first one. You know, that, the low-density residential on the, in the county's plan generally indicates public water and sewer. Because you can see to the, to the left, to the west, that yellow hatching, that's our rural residential land use plan designation. And that's indicative of well-inseptic development. But that LDR on Zeltman doesn't preclude or prevent well-inseptic development, but it generally indicates on the rest of the, in the rest of, in the rest of the county development on public water and sewer. So it is a bit of a, a conflict. It's contradictory, I'll totally admit that. But I'll also add, when the commissioners were evaluating the two hundred requests for rezoning and comp plan change last year, you know, this, that issue brought up was not raised with staff or discussed at all. They, they approved the request that was in front of them.
So, and if I could follow up, one more question. I mean, I've read the paper for other folks telling me that. And this, just a question. That in a sense, the Frederick County Commissioners have decided to ignore AFPO standards, throw out AFPO standards. And again, I don't, sort of, but if you address this, is there a conflict between the current planning methodology and AFPO? Do they eliminate AFPO? What have they done?
We cert, we do have an APFO, adequate public facilities ordinance. It's been amended over the last three years. But we definitely still have one, but they've made some tweaks to it.
And what would be the tweaks?
I don't deal with the ordinance or the application of it. Some of the road standards were relaxed, like trip generation and thresholds for road improvements and things.
More relaxed?
Yes.
Stickers lowered?
Yeah.
So in general, they lowered the standard?
Generally speaking, yes.
So rumors are true? That they, okay, I think it's pretty relevant.
So, I mean, the other issue, if I can continue a moment, you know, the town is indicating in your, in your draft plan, those areas south of one forty-four and south of seventy, you would like to see that for future commercial uses, which is not exactly in conformance what the town, the county has. So that, that could be another area where the town, excuse me, the county would amend its plan to better reflect the town's wishes and visions for those areas in the county.
That's nicely stated, but to be honest, it all sounds very hollow, based on past practices from Frederick County Commissioners. We can tell them what we prefer, but, you know, nothing, that's not against you personally, I'm just saying.
So we wanted to get comments back, you know, obviously, within the sixty-day review and before your public hearing, which is in December, correct? Planning commission here.
That's due now or before.
December fourth is our, our public hearing.
Okay. That's all I had. So look for the comments, probably within two weeks. We'll mail them to Monica and Heather, commenting on the plan. But that's what I would leave you with to, you know, suggest that you, I recommend that you consider contacting the county and have them do a community plan update after your plan is adopted.
Was there any, I know you had a huge turnout at Winchester Hall. Was it last, it was this past week?
Last week, uh-huh.
Right, for the, for the land down, for the?
For the Monrovia Town Center.
Monrovia Town Center? Okay, and in fact, not everyone got to speak, or I mean, there's going to be a continuation of it?
I believe it's, yeah, I'm not handling that case. I believe it's this Wednesday is the spillover for the people that didn't speak last week.
Okay. And, and what's the, what's the aggression of the process for, for, for the town center? Where does it go from here?
Well, it's a rezoning request, so the planning commission will, after they receive all the public testimony, they'll make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. And the Board will have their public hearing. I don't know when that's scheduled, but that's scheduled for, to be held at Urbana High School to accommodate more people. Then the Board will take testimony, then make their decision. Probably not that night, but at a future work session. So that's how the process will work, just like any other rezoning case that we've had.
Okay.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
On this office research and industrial area here, that's south of Westwoodville Boulevard, what is the envisioned access property?
I'm sorry, I'm, Jennifer.
Is the envisioned access?
Well, one forty-four.
Railroad there?
I guess that, I would have to cross, be helpful if I had an aerial.
It's a railroad right away.
Yeah, you know, then that, that's Old Bill Bottom Road, that's probably not adequate for entry into that. I don't have a, a good response to you on that. I'd have to examine the aerial maps a little bit better, Jennifer.
I think we'd always talk about doing something on the South End of Main Street.
Well, we, we, and I know that Streets and Roads would like to see Rising Ridge Road connect somehow. So if there's a way to work your access to line up with Rising Ridge Road and possibly do some sort of connection.
Does, yeah. Doesn't, doesn't Rising Ridge?
Where it comes out on South Main Street.
Yeah, maybe rework Rising Ridge or?
And those are, that's, those are good questions for a community plan update to address those issues in more detail.
Okay.
Anything else for Tim? Okay, great. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Okay, that takes us into unfinished business. And the water and sewer master plan.
Tim, we're good.
Okay.
That works for you, that works for me.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, cool. Well, we had, we had several people look at it, and so, yeah, we think we can, that works. All right, cool. All right, so I think the, the main question here is what to expect for our, and, and we've got three scheduled public forums?
Yeah.
On November second, a Saturday, ten thirty to twelve thirty?
This Saturday?
Yes, this Saturday.
Saturday is the second.
Good grief, that's right, that's his Saturday. Holy smokes.
You have one night, one bill, which is the sixth.
That's the sixth, that's the following Wednesday, that's a Wednesday.
Then you have one during the day here.
Basically, all day.
Yeah.
Wednesday.
And then the sixteenth, Heather, Heather's explanation was she was kind of leaving that up in the air depending. It's a Saturday. She was leaving that one kind of up in the air depending on what the turnout was for the other ones. So that's why it says possible for, and not anything written in Saturday.
Are we going to get a head count of who's going to be at which ones?
Yeah, we've got to.
Can I, oh, okay.
Yeah.
I just want to bring up a point about the zoning.
The zoning, in terms of the master plan?
Yeah. Just, we had talked, I think I talked to you briefly about this the other day. The, I think it's the Brown property where the Goodwill store was going to go. We just came up for discussion. There's a large public outcry, so to speak, against this. And I think we took it to say that we would look at that property zoning and consider rezoning at the master plan. I think we've neglected that.
And we haven't, yeah, we, we got distracted.
And I would like to add that in somewhere on our timeline to look at that and reconsider and possibly rezone.
I agree with that.
Monica, if there, if there are properties that?
Down zone.
We didn't, I'm going to discuss.
We decide we want to discuss or maybe even make a recommendation on?
I think during your sixty-day review period, that's, that's, I mean, what I basically said to Bill before the meeting is, any areas that you want to look at that you think are going to be critical, like in the next ten-year timeframe beyond that, it's really too far off. Because things are going to change, so much the environment's going to change, things are going to change.
So wait for the sixty-day to begin and then bring it up?
Yeah, I mean, I think you're open to discussing that. If you know there's some hotspots that maybe you want to look at or something that's going to be in those areas that you've already discussed to be critical in the next ten-year timeframe, I wouldn't go beyond that. So, yeah, I'd suggest, the short, I'd suggest.
At the start of the sixty-day?
Yeah, I think you can, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, because you're going to have, you might have someone from the public or some.
Because I don't think we discussed it at all.
No, we haven't.
You know, bring that up too. Anybody can bring it up. You guys can generate it or someone else can generate.
Okay. Fair enough.
We basically reacted to the original request, but.
And this is, and this is solely in response to the public's request?
Yeah, I mean, I just didn't.
Back when that discussion was held?
Right, I don't think it's prudent to look at, you know, try to cover everything forever, you know, I mean, that's just.
No, I understand, but I don't think it was ever discussed at all. I don't even think we mentioned it, because it wasn't a request to be zoning. It was something that was sitting there.
I, I don't think we did have any discussion past the original Goodwill.
We had some general discussion about rezoning, downzoning, but we never talked about any.
Not that property, yeah.
We didn't talk about any property.
And the, the question I had for, for Heather and Monica, and I shared the email with, with Tony as well, was if we have any other, you know, second thoughts, or we say, well, wait a minute, maybe there is another parcel or two that we wanted to at least have some additional discussion on ourselves.
Yeah, just think of that timeframe, think of that ten-year timeframe. The critical areas that we're looking to redevelop, revitalize that, or in relation to that. But just don't, you know, just think of that timeframe, because we're going to have another plan update in six years. And then, you know.
No, I understand, I'm just saying, this is actually supposed to have been followed up from the Goodwill proposal that never got followed up on.
Great, great.
If it's wrong, then we.
So basically, we can make contributions ourselves to it.
Okay.
That would review, okay.
And our vote is void if it's misinformation.
So, could we focus on this, please?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you for indulging.
So I think that's, it, it's a good point, though, that if any of us individually or collectively, I mean, we feel like there's additional considerations in terms of properties or even, we think we might even want to have discussion about changing a proposed zoning classification. I mean, we can make that contribution and challenge ourselves to review that, just like we're going to be reviewing the, the feedback from the public. Okay? So that'll basically be, well, we're collecting that all the rest of this month and all November. And, and what's the actual terminating date for the sixty-day?
Your public hearing is potentially scheduled for December fourth, so.
All right, so it'd be in advance of that.
I think you're going to collect a lot of information in that sixty days, so you'll, you'll have, you know, more background information and more feedback from the community on, on those issues.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we really don't know with precision when we're going to have a final draft ready to present to the council. We really don't know that.
It will be December fourth.
Well, December fourth, we would have all our parts, right? But then we would meet collectively one more time. So my opinion would be that if everything went smoothly, the council would see it maybe the beginning of the year.
Yeah, January third, January.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
So we do have some idea.
Yes.
Say we don't. We're looking at January, right, maybe, as long as there's no hiccups.
Well, how about the, at the November twenty-fifth meeting? Wouldn't we also, by that time, have got, we had gone through the open houses?
That was, I think that's.
Feedback from your public hearing, and then you're finalizing stuff at your December meeting, hopefully to send to the council at their January.
Depending upon how much feedback we get, I think that's what Heather was hoping.
Right, because you're basically, the way we did it before was we had a presentation, you know, of the plan, of the planning commission plan to the council.
Yep. Okay. Folks who have been to previous public forums have told me that they, their memory recall that primarily the, the attendees and the contribution are folks that have been involved with rezoning requests of form or another. May, maybe we have some, some additional attendees, but by and large, that's it. Again, I don't know what to expect in terms of people, and I don't know if it's a come and go sort of thing or, or what. Don't know.
We attended back, and we actually sat for the whole meeting. My husband and I, when we, we attended the zoning, master plan.
Okay. So let's take these dates if we could. Folks, who can be available this Saturday from ten thirty to twelve thirty, or at least part of that?
I can be here.
Who can be?
I'll be here.
Okay. So we got Lindy, and Leslie. Yeah, I can be here. Can't be here? All right, can you ask Jennifer? No? Okay. So next.
Afterwards, I'm going down to open up the museum, so you guys can come see the museum.
Okay.
Tony, you, you can't do, I'm just trying to make a list for Heather, so.
All right, so we got Lindy, Leslie, and myself.
And Monica, so she'd be here.
And Monica.
Okay. And Jen, you can't be here?
Barney, Barney will be here.
And Barney, okay, good.
Leslie, can you be here?
I'll be here. November second, yes.
And that's here, in this room?
I won't be.
Yes, that's here in this room here.
Okay.
Tony?
Yeah, I can't.
No, she's fine.
Wishing you were here.
Lucky. All right, then next Wednesday, November sixth, at, at the Carnival Grounds Building. Six thirty to nine, is that the time?
No, seven to, seven to nine.
Seven to nine? Okay. How about then? Who can make that?
I can do that one.
I can do that one.
I'll do that one, you know.
So we got Scott, we got Lindy? We got Jennifer?
I don't think I can do it.
Okay. I can do that one.
I'll be there.
Monica?
I'm a maybe, I'm not sure yet, I'm still trying to.
Tony's a maybe?
Put you in the middle.
I'll be in the middle.
All right, and you? Okay. Barney?
Okay, so I have Scott is a yes, Lindy is a yes, Jennifer is a yes, Monica's a yes, Barney is a yes. Leslie cannot.
No, I'm a no, I'm sorry.
No, you're a no?
Yeah.
Okay. And Tony is a maybe.
That sounds correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
All right, so that takes us then to Wednesday, the thirteenth. And that's at daytime. My gosh. Ten AM to three PM.
I think that, I think Heather was trying to make it accommodating for people who.
Have different schedules.
Have different schedules, possibly night work, possibly a lot of stuff with kids during, you know, evenings to make it easier if they want to come in.
I mean, basically, we're going to be in this building anyway, so I'd say staff can cover the majority in that time period if you guys want to kind of.
I can, I can come. I can do that.
Go for it, Tony.
Jennifer?
I have to work.
I have to, I mean, I could take a furlough day if I wanted, but...
I, um, depending on, I don't know yet if I'll have something to...
I'll put you in the maybe.
I mean, I'm flexible, but I, I can be a maybe for the...
I could be a maybe for part of the...
Yeah, not the whole thing. Everybody's discussed it.
Come on, you don't wanna come sit with us.
Except for the people who work at the building, right, and everyone's gonna be here, it's the whole thing.
We'll take care of us, but...
Okay.
Yeah, I can't do it.
That's bound to be a come and go.
And the sixteenth, though, I wouldn't bet on that one. I don't know till I talk to Heather. She was kinda gonna see how...
The participation...
Yeah, whether we do the last one or not. I can do that.
There you go.
We have to have it on the sixteenth.
We bet I am one.
Take the whole thing.
Okay.
And then the December fourth is our planning commission public hearing.
Is there any of us who cannot, at this point, knows that you're, you would not be able to make the fourth?
I'll be here.
That's a Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
That's a Wednesday?
Heather was pretty insistent, that's, that's...
Wednesdays are the worst for me, 'cause my husband's in New York, and so I can't...
Okay. All right.
As long as it's at, like, seven PM, right?
Seven o'clock, so...
Okay, I can do that one.
As far as I know, si- seven PM?
Yep. Yes, seven.
Yeah.
Seven to nine, okay?
Okay.
All right. People in the audience, have you attended public, public forums of the master plan in previous years? Do you recall? No? Okay. Now, we're all...
I'll, I'll reach out to BJ just to get...
Any insight is, is welcome, yeah.
Bill, can we also make sure that we know that the public hearing is actually gonna be held at the Activity Center and not here at Town Hall? That's actually gonna be up at the Fireman's Activity Building.
You're talking about the sixth, or you're talking about the December fourth?
The fourth, December fourth.
Okay.
December fourth will be up there.
The, the sixth and the fourth are there.
All right. Melissa, did you wanna speak to, um, how you, what you, materials you're gonna have available for those sessions?
Uh, we will have maps available. We'll run up versions of them, much larger than you have seen in your plans. And, uh, we anticipate having staff and town planning members also be available as people walk up to the maps for comments and questions. What we're doing to keep it, um, fair is only really accepting written comments, either to our email address, masterplan2013@mountainrymd.org, or sent to Town Hall. So, we're gonna set up like a comment station available, so if somebody comes and talks to us and says, "Well, I want, I would really like to make this comment," you can say, "Over here is a station. Please write down your thoughts and hand it back to us," and we're accepting those also in addition to the public hearing comments. So, what do you think of that idea?
Good idea.
I like it.
Comment, people will write...
As well publicized people, though.
Yeah, we're gonna, she's gonna utilize the Facebook. Um, I'm gonna put it on the CMC slideshow, so every time one of our meetings airs, it, it will show it.
A lot of website. Well, what we were discussing about that is because the non-our messenger comes out twice. By the time it comes out, two of them will already be over, pretty much. So we're gonna put it in there, but it's...
About the December fourth meeting?
Uh, for the December fourth meeting?
Is that the format you're talking about?
Oh, we're definitely, no, this is for the open houses.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, because, um, for the public hearing, what they can do is sign up to talk before seven thirty, and then anything that they say goes right to public record.
So the comments that you're solic- you're allowing to be written on these open houses, is that gonna be part of testimony?
Yes.
Then they need to make su- you need to make sure they're providing their name and address?
Yes. I think we might come up with like a form that they have...
Somebody should make sure, or at least...
And you'll have that on the website, too.
Directions should be provided, that they have to provide it, or else the comment would not be accepted.
Yeah, directions that if we don't...
Right, right, they have to be in town, right, so they can build through that.
They have to be in town, I believe.
Okay.
So we'd have to verify, and we can do that with Marsha with water bills to verify.
Okay. I didn't mean to, to gloss over the, the, the master plan. In, in anyone's review thus far, any issues, concerns, questions, comments? Melissa, did you have anything else on the, the open houses and so forth? Dr. O'Brien?
December fourth, the public hearing, you would be able to speak, correct?
Yes, yes.
Sort of format for that?
Yeah, yeah.
You have to, just like before, you all have to sign up in advance of... I think there's a time...
Up until seven thirty.
And that's so they can keep it orderly? So we don't have a mad rush and three hours of...
Also, we anticipate, depending upon the number of people who've signed up, we may need to ask folks to, yeah, confine their...
Oh, we should, yeah.
Their comments to, you know, certain period of time.
Well, it'll be just like before, the same format, where people will basically be able to say what they need to say, and the body will listen.
Right.
It won't be a two-way.
Right.
So what will be the time format?
I would say, what, it'll be probably two to three minutes.
Doors open at six PM.
No, for comments?
Comments begin at seven.
Five is way too long. Five is way too long.
And then, I think it might be three minutes.
Three minutes?
Three.
Yes.
For comment?
Three at the most.
For each person.
So it's three minutes per person?
Yes.
Just to keep things moving, 'cause we expect a lot of people are gonna wanna make comments.
Yep.
Is the public hearing gonna be here?
No.
No.
It's...
Activities, but...
It'll also be activities, it's gonna be Carnival grounds.
We posted it, I don't know if you have access to a computer on our website. Under the government tab, there's a page called master plan, and then schedule it on there.
You have projections?
You have three minutes, and you're gonna have a little egg timer.
Projecting system? Not, um...
Thank you very much.
We... I would imagine we'll, we'll get something together.
We'll try to, something, yeah.
If, if someone were to bring like a PowerPoint, is that what you're thinking?
Maybe that's it.
We do have the screen.
But we need to know in advance that there's something coming.
I would encourage us receiving those ahead of time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not at the meeting, because sometimes it's just not gonna matter.
Technical difficulties...
You wanna give a PowerPoint?
You can email it to us.
Possibly, could be just part of the test.
I thought he was asking if we were gonna be projecting.
You, you can do that, we just need to know ahead of time, so that we can have the technical stuff set up and ready to go.
Scott, would we need a copy of the PowerPoint to keep it around?
You'd have to give a, you'd have to give a PowerPoint, 'cause it'd, A, have to go on the record, and B, you would have to end up...
And then I would just need a copy of it.
Yeah, I, Barney, you just need to make sure, whoever's setting it up, that yes, it plays, and our equipment's at the right version and whatever, 'cause I'd hate for you to bring something in.
Right.
Or, or, you know, Office two thousand and ten, and we have two thousand and seven on the machine, it will play. I, that's not fair, you, if you're gonna...
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
I made a short presentation.
All right, so is that complete unfinished business? Before we get into new business, you wanna speak to this, yep?
So, I just wanted to rediscuss real quickly the Dunkin' Donuts, um, sign permit that was brought up. Um, I apologize again, I wasn't here for that, but in looking at the numbers, one of the questions I had was that previously approved, there was the seven by seven sign, forty-nine square feet. There was two signs out of the three that were approved, three feet tall by some dimension wide. Don't know what those were, but they were by the drive-in, too, and those are part of the total signage, square footage. A, were those signs removed in the new proposal? I'm looking to you all, 'cause I was not here for the discussion or the vote.
No.
No. So I'm assuming those signs are still conveying to the new proposal, so they need to be included in the total square footage, forty-nine plus whatever that is. In addition, I think it was misunderstood, until I looked at it, there's actually two wings on the sign. Each wing consists of six point four square feet, so that would negate any vote, I believe, that you had, because it was interpreted there was only one wing at six point four. Six point four times two will get you to twelve point eight, twelve point eight plus forty-nine is sixty-one, which is in excess of the fifty-eight square foot allowed, not even counting the two three-foot by whatever size signs.
Okay, I, I was not... I, I understood there were two wings. So, for you to say that we thought there was only one, that's not, I don't think that's the case, but obviously, the calculation's not right.
Yeah, and fair, no, I'm just saying the calculation said six point four, that calculation, I believe, is off one wing.
Okay.
So now that you didn't know there was two wings...
I knew there were two, but you're right, it's larger than...
And, and, and I didn't, I also didn't have the information on any existing signs, other than what's on this picture, so...
Yeah, the, the previous thing that was brought in nine twenty-six, the news before. It was history that was attached way in the back.
Yeah.
That said, here's what was previously approved, and it said they brought three signs, and only two of them were approved by the Palace Planning and Zoning Commission, and said they were three and a half feet tall, but it doesn't say how wide they were. And I'm assuming in the one image, this one sign here with the donuts, is one of those signs. Because it said in the old nine twenty-six eleven minutes, that the two signs would be on the drive-through.
Motion made by Diane, that one you were talking about?
Where were you reading? Um, on the, on the nine twenties, on the first package, Dunkin' Donut, the first one that got mailed out, um, she had...
I might never open that one, because I got the second one.
The historical information was...
Yeah, and then it had the minutes from the meeting from nine twenty-six, two thousand and eleven, when this came up. But that was on your first package. So the next time we have multiple versions of packets, can you make sure that all the information from the first one is in the second one? 'Cause I didn't even look at this.
Yeah, I didn't.
Okay, can we...
And I was, that's why I was talking to Tony about it, 'cause I, we were both here when this occurred.
Okay, we, we need to verify then, square footage, Annalise? And Barney?
Just so I'm clear, Scott, you talking about the motion Diane made is in conflict with...
What was approved back on nine twenty-six eleven?
Seven by seven with two directional signs.
All were in favor of her motion.
A menu board to measure that, and two, only two directional, which should, which should measure no taller than three and a half feet.
Correct, so it doesn't say the width, but you have to take those two signs, plus the seven by seven, and subtract that from the linear footage of fifty-eight feet, right? You only get fifty-eight feet to play with.
The my seven and two signs, which you made it no taller than three, oh, so the width, you're saying, is the, the ambiguities in the width of the sign?
No, whatever, what I did was, and if everybody wants a copy of it, I can write it out. But I ended up saying, okay, the original proposal was seven by seven, three and a half by something, three and a half by something, and all that had to be less than fifty-eight square feet.
Oh, okay.
Now you look at the new proposal, there's two wings being added in addition, which is twelve point eight square feet on top of...
Thirty-six instead of eighty-three.
Yep.
So let's just, I mean, let's clarify, can, can we measure, can we clarify?
Just, just to be fair, 'cause I, I wanna make sure that we're...
But we also need to reach out to him and say, hey, by the way, sorry.
And we need, absolutely, that's gonna be the next point.
And if, if he's pulling to out sign one, sign two, and all that, that may change.
Yeah, we, we need to say that, we just, we need to double check, okay? And we'd be remiss and inconsistent if we didn't.
And I could not find any pictures of what direction our signs look like. I mean, I know you guys got it, remember it was the whole thing, were they turned?
Forty-nine.
No.
The directional sign.
Well, we just need to see what it is.
Is that what that sign was?
Well, you probably don't.
Was that a directional sign?
But we've approved it, so we need to...
That's why I wanna reach out to him, and we need to clarify what the actual dimensions are.
I think we need to do something about our action right now, tonight, before we leave. We need to amend the motion, yeah, approve it, and then say we're gonna go look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree.
Can we go back and do that?
So, we're, we're asking, we're asking a procedural question. Hopefully, somebody here can answer that's experienced it before, since we're kind of all green. Monica?
Yes.
Can we go back and negate this decision, because we need clarification on all the information?
Can we open it back up?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
Then my recommendation would be to negate the decision on this, open it back up and get more information and reach out to the owner.
Well, we'll, we'll have to make a motion, open it up. Okay, I'll make a motion to reopen the Dunkin' Donuts signage discussion, or proposal.
All right, motion made by Leslie, seconded by Scott, to reopen the Dunkin' Donuts discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, like sign, okay?
So now that it's open, can we request staff and Barney to go get the information and notify the individual that we need to...
I would put on the record what you figured out.
So, so on the record, I'll just state that, um, I believe that there was the wing size...
Annalise speaking, he has notes to this effect, he'll give you in a minute.
I believe one of the, uh, the square footage did not take into account a second wing, making it twelve point eight square feet versus six point four. And in addition, there was two signs that were previously approved not to exceed three point five feet tall by some dimension wide, that also aren't defined in here, for us to be able to do an accurate count of what the total signage is.
And what's, what's our max allowed square footage, should we say?
The frontage on the drive-through side is only fifty-eight square feet.
And that's what we're using?
That's where the signs are. According, according to your format, the signs on that side of the building.
No comment. 'Cause that's not the front of the building.
No, he goes by the dress. Tony goes by the dress.
It isn't the front of the building, you're right.
It isn't.
The front of the building's actually forty-eight square feet.
So really, you should be using the forty-eight feet.
Well, if we're using forty-eight...
But you guys are okay with sides and...
If we're using forty-eight feet, it's different.
No, you should use the frontage, that's what the requirement says.
Is there a second to...
I'll second.
There is an emotion.
Oh, he didn't make a motion.
Right, he didn't, he didn't even make a motion yet, he's just making...
Yeah, so, so that's the clarification on this, so, and I'd also like to... Thank you. Remove the motion.
Make a motion. Make a motion to remove the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the approval on the existing sign permit that was presented. And I don't know if I got that...
Let's, let's do that one first.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion to remove the approval, to vacate the approval, the earlier approval, seconded by Jennifer. All in favor, lady, by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Okay, that's been vacated, now...
Or start back at the beginning.
So then, I'd like to make a motion that the additional square footage for the wings is accurately reflected for the two wings, that sign one and sign two's square footage, if there remaining, is also reflected in this permit that's being presented, and that we have an accurate total of the total signage that is being presented for approval. For that side of the building. I'm gonna let you...
No, I want you to clarify what is our maximum square footage we're allowing. Based on the discussion with the other building.
I amend the motion.
So, and I would end up recommending, well, I will state that the maximum square footage on the building, based on other conversations, is the front of the building for where the address is. So, yes?
It's not where the address is, it's the frontage, the length of the building that faces the public road, the public right of way.
So it's the length of the building that faces the public road, which in this case is forty-eight square feet.
So, I mean, even the existing sign exceeds that.
The existing sign, seven by seven, doesn't. Oh, yes, it does, by one square foot, and it was already approved.
It exceeds that, plus the signs that you're talking about, they're on the rest.
And, and the fact that, this is not part of the motion, the fact that the forty-nine square foot and those two signs were previously approved, and I'm gonna look at Roxanne, but, and that was also two years ago, statute of limitations, probably, you can't go back and tell them, you gotta take those signs out, so whatever they are, there are. But you can't do like and kind, you can't do anything else, you can't swap out sign for sign and still get forty-nine plus the three signs.
It just makes sense for you to stand by the original approval.
I'm not changing the original approval, it's what they're presenting here, that they want to come forward, they will-
I mean, I would just, I would flat out deny that, and just stand like the original approval standard.
I don't know.
We, we first have to verify, I think, what's, what's the existing square footage, we know what the frontage is, and therefore what the allowable is, and we're going to confirm what the additional square footage of the wings would be, although it just seems like it's open and shut. We've got to do that.
Because they, they're forward, and we need to give them a definitive answer of why.
So we, uh, we spoke out of turn, we gave them an improper.
Right, right.
What's the motion?
Is my motion clear?
But what was proposed to us?
Are we deferring, is that the motion, deferring until we get a, an accurate?
Just a quick comment for that frontage, the, the edge ready level, the, the front that faces the traffic is Jennifer's truck. The revised one would say it's forty-eight square feet, the original one says forty-nine square. Okay, so, let's, let's, how about we make it really easy, like Monica said?
Thank you, Lindy, for sharing.
I will end up denying, or making a motion to, um, disapprove this, and go back and get more information, so that this permit can be evaluated.
Other than this, can you explain what you're dis- you're disapproving?
I'm disapproving approval of this existing permit that was done previously.
Okay.
As is.
That's what I wanted you to say, the existing permit.
Yeah, well, we vacated that.
Yeah. But she's saying, make the motion.
Well, you said this, I just wanted to know what, I wanted you to say with this.
I'm gonna let you make the motion in a minute, Leslie.
Does anyone want a second to this motion?
I'll second it.
That's kind of scary, I don't know.
Okay.
It's not rocket science.
All right.
We made it to hell, yes.
Okay. Everyone who is, is in favor of his motion, which basically is, we're gonna go back and clarify, okay, what that, the square footage of the sign is, and the wings, and the frontage of the building.
And the, like Monica said, the existing thing already stands, so that's water under the bridge, the forty-nine and the two signs, yes.
Okay. So, we, we're gonna clarify the base case here. Okay, and whether or not the wings exceed it, but there are two of them rather than one. Okay, all in favor, Lynn, by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Okay.
Thank you.
I just, I want to make a comment, that's a general comment, but related to this. So when we're talking about how, the frontage thing, and how we're making determinations, I just think we, we need to make sure that we're consistent.
Yes.
And, like, like if they, I assume that the, when that was approved before, they were using the side that the signs are on, or probably wouldn't have passed, we don't know, right? But we, we need to make sure, but we need to make sure in our fine guidelines, whatever, that we haven't passed it.
Because most regularly, it's the actual, it's the front of the building that's facing the street.
Yeah, I just, we just really need to know, and be consistent, and know that, you know.
Going forward.
What was that?
That that's what we're, that that's what we're, you know.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, consistency is very important.
Because it needs, it needs to be fair across the board.
Yeah.
Consistent and consistent with what the requirements are.
Right.
Not just made up.
Yes, exactly.
And not just regulation, but yeah.
We need to be consistent with the actual requirements.
So if I have, I just want to clarify, because when they come and bring sign permits, and I just want to make sure we tell them correctly, if their, front of their door faces Bridgeville Boulevard, and they're on a corner of that building, and they technically have two spots,
Corners are special.
It's only what faces what the door you want.
I don't know, corners are special.
No, corners are special.
No, what? Monica read the-
Way I understand, what she read was, the sign is placed, whatever side of the building the sign's placed on, that's the frontage you're determining. So, and it, and it has to be frontage being, uh, along a public road.